Okay, we'll begin with the reading or the approval of our minutes from last month, if everyone's had a chance to look over them.
I make a motion that we approve the operating statements from June 17th, the closed session meetings from June 17th, the meeting minutes from July 8th, the work set, I'm sorry, the June 2017 council meeting minutes, the July 8th, 2019 work session minutes, and Quantum's financial statement for June 2019.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, or we have any questions? Hearing none, all those in, fay rise.
Aye.
No, motion's carried. Okay, next on our agenda, we have Vicki Prettyman. I think I got that correct. We'll have you come up to the-
And Mayor, if I could just remind the council that on March 29th, a few of us attended a meeting at Maryland Department of the Environment, and as a result of that, MDE had reached out to Circap, which is an agency that assists small rural communities with public works and growth issues at no charge. And we talked about this, and we had contacted MDE and sort of verified that they were recommending Circap as a good source for the town. We talked about that in May. Council wanted to, was ready to at least hear what Circap might have to offer. And so Vicki, along with Jean Holloway, who I understand Jean will make the presentation to you tonight, will explain a little bit about what Circap might have to offer. We have, in the interim, sent them a wave of information to just give them an idea of some of our issues with water, sewer, the growth facing the town, so they have some background. And also, I guess what started this was the discussion about rate studies, which we're not quite ready to enter into yet, but Circap also gets involved in the rate studies, so that might be something that we can think about as Jean talks to us. So with that, Jean Holloway.
Good evening. I'm coming to this a little bit late. Vicki did a lot of the research from the information that was sent, but I'm the state manager for Circap. We are a regional nonprofit that serves seven states, from Delaware down to Florida. We are part of the Rural Community Assistance Partnership. There are six such regions nationwide and in Puerto Rico. And we all receive different program funding through our national parent organization to provide free services to towns like Union Bridge, small towns, anything under 10,000 population. And we help you basically solve problems. A lot of the small towns we work with may only have two or 300 people. They may have one or two staff people. So we kind of try and fill in the gaps. Our main reason for being is to help bring small towns, rural communities, into more modern practices and trying to help build capacity, I think is the best way to put it, build both your technical managerial and financial capacity. I did put a presentation that looks like this in your packet. That is kind of a standard training session I do for mayors and councils to talk about my approach to doing rate studies right now. I'm the one that does most of the rates, well, I'm the one that does all of them right now. But I will be handing that over probably soon to Vicki or one of- well, there's only three of us in the Delaware, Maryland office, so the choices are me or two others, so that's as good as it gets. But as far as our region, we have 48 staff people. We even have individual housing programs that are operated out of our office in Roanoke, Virginia, which is where our corporate office is. I did bring along, I just brought one copy, because they don't give me so many, of our annual report. This gives you some ideas of some of the things we've done. There's a case study in here from Delaware, another from Maryland, because we work in both states. We also have some things like guides like this, which I can get for you individually, or I just brought one copy tonight, Formulating Great Rates for Small Systems, and also Protecting Water Quality, and then the big guide for Small Systems for Board Members. So these are some of the resources that we can provide. But our services include helping you with applications for funding. If you were to have a major project, an upgrade, we can help you find funding, we can help you fill out the application. I'm gonna let Vicki talk about that. She's working under a new program that we just got this year funded through USDA Rural Development to help communities with RD-apply, which is their application process. That's all computerized now, and it's given some of the smaller towns a lot of headaches trying to get through it. So we have this new project where she will help you find funding. I myself have been a grants administrator. We've both been town administrators. So we've kind of sat on your side of the desk, on Dawn's side of the desk, and listen to people tell us what we ought to be doing and how we ought to do it. But we try to keep that in mind and not make decisions for you or force you into decisions. We try to help you figure out what your alternatives are and what the best decisions are. And when you're ready for a rate study, I can provide that. I have about, I think I have six in the pipeline at present. But, you know, we can work it in. As I say, we're all over the place. We even do solid waste, helping people set up recycling programs, and we do education programs and things like that. I do a lot of training. I can do a specialized training for Union Bridge, or can use your council chambers to train people from the area, whatever works out for you. I'd be happy to answer any questions. I don't have a standard spiel when it comes to explaining our organization. In spite of, we just got back from training, teaching us how to sell our services, and I guess I didn't learn very much, but I never did believe in hard sells anyway. So does anybody have any questions or anything that I didn't cover that you're curious about?
Is it still that your grants, that doesn't cover new development? It just covers the existing?
Depends on the program.
Okay.
Depends on the program. There are funding programs, for example, USDA will fund what they call reasonable growth in the course of an upgrade, for example, if you have to upgrade your water system. Now, if the project is all about growth, then they might back down from that. The SRF program in Maryland, I'm not sure, Vicki probably knows more about the restrictions on that than I do at this point. I've been operating in Delaware for so long, I've forgotten what I did learn about Maryland, and most of it's changed. But there are more restrictions on growth projects than there are on upgrades, with growth included.
Well, I think that's one thing that we're, you know, we have two developments that are on the books for Union Bridge, but both of them have, you know, we have growth problems with our sewer plant. And, you know, people said, "Well, why don't you help get these developments going?" But from what we've understood so far, it does not, the grants do not cover new development. It will cover what we have to do as far as upgrading our present system for the existing Union Bridge, but not for new growth. That's what, I think she may have some answers that we might, we have to work with.
Again, USDA will fund what they consider reasonable growth, and what's, you know, reasonable is a subjective term. So it just depends if, you know-
Who reads it?
75% of your project is for new growth and 25% is for upgrade, that they're probably not gonna fund.
Right.
If the balance is the other way, they probably would. So it just depends. But we will help you try and find funding. And very often, it's a jigsaw puzzle. It's not any one source, anyway. So sometimes we can find what one source won't fund, maybe we can find another one that will. We also have our own internal, run out of the Roanoke office, our own internal loan program up to $250,000. So I know that's not a lot of money when you think about public works, but very often, that provides a bridge. If you're getting USDA funding and it's not gonna come through for another year, then, you know, that can help you get through the out-of-pocket costs. So that's a possibility as well.
Okay.
But I would encourage you to look at our annual report and see some of our case studies and some of the things that we can do. The main thing is, we are here to help you. We're not from the government, and we are here to help you, and we don't charge anything.
That's the good part.
We also, I also have some training that I do on capital improvement projects and planning, and how to calculate impact fees and things like that. So if you're looking at a high amount of growth impact fees or capital recovery charges, as they are more palatable to call them, we may be able to help you calculate those as well.
Okay.
Any other questions for me?
Yes, I have a question. If the town seeks to use your services, is there some kind of retainer agreement, or we just call you when we need you?
Just say, "I want you to do whatever for us, and we set up a project on our internal data capture service." Once it's in DCS, or Data Capture System, excuse me, once it's in DCS, it's in concrete for us, and that's all we really need. We also, one thing I did neglect to mention, we have a nationally recognized forum for doing technical managerial and financial capacity assessments. And it will, we ask, sit down with Dawn, sit down with your water operator, your wastewater operator, as the case may be, and ask a bunch of questions. And depending on the answers to those questions, it will pop up areas of critical concern, or just areas of concern or deficiency. So sometimes, that's the place that we start. It's not a retainer as such, but it gives you a starting point and helps you figure out what you need to work on first. Because a lot of times, in a small community, everything is top priority, and you have to figure out what comes first. And sometimes, that kind of assessment will help you figure that out. So that's something that we would do, we could do at your request. And again, no charge.
Okay.
In this case, you get more than what you pay for, I hope.
Okay, good.
There's also not-so-hypothetical situation that we have now, preliminary to the rate study stage. We have these two developers and their engineers interacting with the town's engineering firm to come up with the, I guess, the, well, to come up with a scope of study to determine the way to expand the plant or expand capacity, whether it's this plant, another plant, or a combination of plants. And, you know, we're hearing costs in the range of $60,000 to $100,000 just to do the study. Now, is that something that you might be able to find some grant money for, or some assistance?
Well, I'm gonna let Vicki address that, because she knows more about that part of it than I do. I know that USDA has search grants, but right now, Maryland is maxed out. There is no more Maryland money. But I'm gonna let her step up to the mic.
Okay.
Hi, thank you again for having us. Vicki Prettyman, with Circap. So currently, the search grant funding that USDA has in place is expensed for 2019, and they're already saying that 2020 is expensed as well. There's a small amount that USDA gives each state, and right now, it's at 70, oh, I'm sorry. Okay, it's, right now, it's at $70,000 a state. So Maryland is, there's a lot of rural towns that are needing the search grant money. And again, it pays, that's a 100% grant, anywhere from $25,000 to $30,000 that it would give a small rural community. But there is a PPG, a planning, a preliminary planning grant that is available to communities, and at 75%, and the community would then pay 25%. So at least 75% of that estimated $60,000 could be paid by USDA on a PPG. And we would be able to process that application fairly quickly to request those funds. There's, everything now with USDA is online. It's all through RD-apply. We would do an e-authenticate process with the town for the financial side of things, and then you would then give me authorization. As an authorized user, and the engineer for the town would also have authorization, so they could upload any type of preliminary data. So that is planning grants. Now, we do a planning grant for the water system, and also a planning grant for the wastewater system. So they would be two separate grants that would be available to the municipality.
There is one other option, there's no guarantees. We have an affiliation with the Community Engineering Board, which is a domestic version of Engineers Without Borders. And we have successfully applied to them before, and they would do the study for no cost at all. But that's something that's, you know, we would have to get that approved. I'm just finishing up a project in southern Maryland that they have done a study for a small community there. So I've got to get some details, and I'm gonna write the application, and then roll the dice and see if it would get funded. But that's a possibility that could be done for nothing if they would accept it.
They also work on a volunteer basis, so that would be after, after work is when they would come in, so it does take more time.
It would take over a year for them to even do the study.
Also, growth should pay for, oh, go ahead. Growth should pay for growth. So we wanna really look at what your impact fees are, and how those impact fees coming from those new developers would then pay for the growth portion of your upgrades to your water and wastewater. But preliminary planning, the PER, the Preliminary Engineering Report, is very important. And funding for those, again, a search grant is, they're eligible, you guys are eligible for a search grant, but when the expense, it's all expensed. When we can put an application in for a search grant and hope for 2020, you know, an award in 2020, but PPG is something that we could get an answer back much more quickly.
General fiscal year will start October 1st, so the recycle will begin then. It just depends on the timing.
You mentioned a program where there is a town match, so a grant with a town match. I mean, this may not be a fair question generically, but could the developers be made to pay that? In other words, if the town could get a grant of X number of dollars, and the town contribution would be some other lesser number, could that be?
I would have to ask that. But it all depends on how your public works agreement with those developers is written.
If that were an exaction from the town that you required of the developer, I don't think they'd care, I don't think MDE would care where you got the money from.
It would be an expense, yeah. All the USDA wants to know is if the town, if that will be coming from town funds. Now, if there's an agreement between the new developer and the town in that public works agreement or in those agreements, that all engineering fees will be paid by the developer, then I would say yes. Because that would be an expense.
That's in our annexation agreement. We don't have public works agreements yet, because we're not quite far enough along. But when we annexed these two large properties, we have, I mean, it was hard to predict what the exact costs were gonna be, but we have generic language that requires them.
So you do have an annexation agreement with these new developers already?
Yes.
Okay, that would be helpful to see, too, John, that would be.
Surely, they'd be happier paying 25% of the cost than they would.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So again, as Jean had stated, we're both town administrators in our past life. And I've been with Circap for the last, for six months now. I just celebrated my sixth month anniversary. But there was a situation where my previous employer, we needed a backup well. USDA funded it, and in a public works agreement we had with that developer, they paid, you know, the balance of it, so it's-
It's more often called public works agreements in Delaware than it is annexation agreements.
Yes.
But it's kind of same thing.
Yeah, so there's a lot, there's options. We gotta get into the meat of these new developments and really look at annexation agreement and what their plans really are. And again, impact fees are, you can, that's, in the public works agreement, that's where you kind of get into, where are you gonna do this for the town? Are we gonna charge you a per EDU impact fee, water, and then a per EDU wastewater impact fee? And we can be in that, you know, in that communication with you and give you as much advice and experience as we can, as you guys are going through this.
I used to work for the Environmental Planning Center at the University of Maryland, and we did a study some time ago. And I still use their formulas, but it was on how to calculate impact fees, and it depends on capacity available and how much capacity you have to add. There's different formulas, but that's something that I can help you with, if you don't already have a calculation.
Well, we have, the skeleton of the public works agreement's pretty well negotiated with a bunch of blanks, and these are the numbers that you're talking about. We just don't know, we're not even close at this point until we know what needs to be built, what capacity we need, what it's gonna cost. And we can't get to that until we have a scope of what has to be done. So that's where we are.
We are here to work with the town engineers and town council, and in any way you guys see fit that you wanna bring us in. Again, we work for you. I think that's really important to know, that we're not gonna, like Jean had said before, we're not gonna tell, we're gonna give you advice just from experience with working with multiple municipalities and the capacities that we've been in, and some out-of-the-box ideas. You know, and some, and again, with the engineers, too.
But our job is, again, is to help you identify alternatives and give you whatever you need to make the decision. The decision is still yours.
Absolutely.
Sounds good. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And I went to college in Westminster, so I love coming up here.
Thank you again.
Thank you. Okay. Now, we'll go on down to the mayor's report. And beans, we have a gentleman here now. Connor Daly. Let's see. Laura, you might, if you wanna do this, beans, you were there. The one that did it all at the school. Well, you can introduce him. We'll have him read his essay, if he'd like to.
I think it's written, you know what?
Come on up, Connor.
Just so you know what he is. I think it's on there. Yeah.
So this is Connor Daly.
Where you use the microphone. Don't wanna be mad at you.
This is Connor Daly of Union Bridge. The fourth graders every year are asked to participate in the If I Were Mayor Essay Writing Contest. I go to Elmer Wolf, and I talk to all the fourth graders. I invite them to write an essay, and we send it, the essays, to the Maryland Municipal League for the If I Were Mayor Contest. And we always pick one from the local elementary school, an essay that we like. And so we chose Connor this year as the best essay for Elmer Wolf Elementary School. So we want Connor to read his essay. I have it here before we do. I want to give Connor, we have a certificate of recognition, and it says, "To Connor Daly in recognition of your outstanding essay for the 2019 If I Were Mayor Essay Contest." Congratulations, Connor. I also have a gift certificate for you to go to Regional Pizza with your family, where our local business is. And if you wanna come up here, you can read your essay into my book.
I think she wants you to turn the mic around sixteen miles. There you go.
Yeah, that's okay.
So Connor's essay, I'm not going to read it, but he wrote about community policing and how we should be more of a community and help each other and look out for one another to call the police when necessary, and to help around the neighborhood, like helping with moving day, driving people somewhere if they don't have a driver's license or if their parents aren't home, and helping them, if they have money lying around that they don't need, they can donate it to other people. So he did a good job, and it was a unique essay, and he was the only one who wrote about that topic, I think because his dad's a police officer. But it was a great essay, Connor, so thank you for coming tonight.
And Ellen, do you remember how many we had from Elmer Wolf this year? We had a bunch.
Forty-one, I believe.
I think it was 41 essays from Elmer Wolf this year. So that was pretty good. Every year, there gets to be a couple more or so. Thank you for your time. And I thank Laura, because, like I say, it's, a lot of the towns, the mayors go, but over the years, it's very difficult to get into Elmer Wolf School at a particular time, and beans, Laura is out there, she volunteers a lot and everything, so she has taken on that project to go and work with the school on those projects. So I appreciate that very much for taking care of that for me.
And that was actually one of 2,711 essays that were judged for the contest statewide.
That's good, thank you. Okay, we'll go right on down with some other things on my report. This past month, July the 10th, was our town manager's luncheon, which we don't have a town manager, but I do attend that luncheon every month. The WRCC, which is the Water Resource Coalition Coordination Council for Carroll County, we meet every month. In the last 10 years, the county has gotten, received $17 million in grants, and that was basically, grants people there that was working, and this was to upgrade and restore some of the stormwater management ponds in Carroll County. So they've done a good job at that, and probably within the next month, there could be, starting at the stormwater management pond at Elmer Wolf School, they're gonna redo that one to do some upgrades. And then they're also looking to do another project in Union Bridge to take care of some of the stormwater runoff that we have from Main Street down. They're still looking on a possible way to get that done in Union Bridge. Last Thursday, the 18th, I attended a celebration in Tonty Town. They had, the city of Tonty Town had a celebration for Jim McCarron that was 20, 20-some years in service as a councilman, Maryland Municipal League president in the past, was mayor for I don't know how many years, so they had a very nice celebration for him. And I presented a proclamation from the Maryland Municipal League, because it was closer to Union Bridge and up here, descended the county, so I gave that proclamation. And it was a night that the Carroll County mayors gave him a very nice proclamation. All of them signed it. And all eight mayors were there this time, it was all eight mayors attended. So that was very good attendance over there. Saturday, Donald and I attended the, down at the Flood Flame Brewery, or Lucy's, whatever you wanna call it, Lucy's Little Red Wagon Event, down at north end of town. It was a sweet corn eating contest. And Donald and I was there to represent, we were there as councilpeople and mayor, but we were also the, two of the judges for the sweet corn eating contest. That was very interesting. They had, I don't know, about 12, 13 kids from five to 10, and a couple from 12, from 11 to 17, and from 18 and above. And they had to see how much sweet corn, the grownups had to husk their corn and see how much they could eat in five minutes. We had three judges there, we had to judge those people. And then the little kids, that was really great to see them. They had sweet corn from all over, to face up to their ears, their eyes, and that was, that was very nice. More of those kind of things we need in town. Last month, also Limbo's Railroad Pub down here had a, what do they call?
Suicide prevention.
Suicide prevention event down there for a young man in town here that had suicide back in March or something like that. So they had this suicide prevention event, and that was very well-tended that day. They made, I think someone said around $4,000 to give the suicide prevention. So these are the kind of things we like to hear, it's the positive things that's going on in Union Bridge, instead of some of the negative stuff that we hear all the time. So you're gonna see more and more different kinds of activities going on around town, people working together, doing these kind of events. So all we need is to make sure that you come out and they're attended, because it's a lot of effort that goes in these events. And it was, just to go show you, the other day, it was 100 degrees down there, and there was probably in and out during the day of probably a couple hundred people. So the weather doesn't always keep everybody away. We did a lot of sweating that day, didn't we, Donald? It was very nice.
It was hot.
So we do have, right here, we have the people that, the guy, him and his wife have a snowball stand down here a couple nights a week, and right on Everett Road, we'd have soft ice cream. So there's a lot of things that make people come around Union Bridge right now. You have snowballs or soft ice cream, and there's gonna be all kinds of events that's gonna happen later this fall and throughout the year. So we're kind of excited about that. Then all the, the mayor and council attended the conference in Ocean City. Last month, it was- Last month, it was June the twenty-third to the twenty-fifth. It was Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. And I think everybody has a list of whatever they did all day long, every days. We, everybody has a report of what they did. It was meetings all day long. We had general sessions on Monday and Tuesday. We had meetings on active shooters, community response teams. I attended a couple of board of directors meetings. So everybody has a list of everything and we're not going to sit here and bore you with every meeting that we attended in those three days. But it's not ocean, well, they changed it from Ocean City Convention to Ocean City Conference because it is a work. It's not just going down there and sitting around. It's, it's all day there. Most of the mornings I was there between eight, eight-thirty in the morning. Ellen, she's there a lot of times in the morning helping with registration. So, and then when you attend these meetings all day long and everything, there's, they're well worth the money to go down there and find out how the other municipalities work. The different seminars that they have. It's a very, very good networking affair. And I think that this year was the record number of people that attended. And then also with concessions, they had a record number of concessions. They had people they had to turn away. They could not get in there with their wares. They wanted to, so people to come to your stands and see. So next year they're going to move all the big equipment outside so they'd have more room inside for more concession stands. So that's the plans right now. So better and better and better every year. That's about all that I have on mine right now. Other than, I did bring this, this painting in. We've had this painting in the town office for a couple of years now. Richard Aitman was a famous painter, a portrait, a painter that lived here in town. He did a lot of portraits of different children around town. This is one of the ones that was into the bank for a long time. The bank closed up. We inherited it. We really don't have room to hang this down here. I know it's a beautiful painting. It's someone's child. And I know if they knew it was here, they would love to have it in their home or because Richard Aitman's a very famous person. Between the painting and the framework on it, I would like the owner, the original owner to get it back. A lot of his paintings went to the Historical Society and I would really much rather see this go back to the family than the Historical Society.
As long as that was painted, that child is probably a grown adult.
That, that child is grown up. We have one out here. It's one of Jack Cromer's sons on the wall here and his son has grown up and has kids the size of that. So.
The adult.
This one here is, this is probably a twenty-five to thirty-year-old painting. So hopefully somebody will see it, come down and claim it. I would like to give it back to your rifle owner and so that they can have something. Like I say, one day it's, Richard Aitman's paintings are going to be worth some money. So. That's the all I have right now. We'll go to John.
Okay, well, I do have in my update, sort of an update of what's happening in our Public Service Commission case. We, the town has gotten formal notice of the, the second public hearing, which will be on August nineteenth. This is the same date that we've announced, starting at six-thirty this time at the fire hall rather than the community center. I'm not sure we mentioned that. I'm not sure we knew that the last time. So no changes there. I think that what council can be doing in the meantime is, you know, encouraging townspeople, county officials, delegates, you know, to be supportive of the town as part of that process. If they can come, that's great. If they can send a letter, that's great. But anything that can throw some support behind the town's position. Preliminary to that, we have, the lawyers have a status conference with the judge on August sixth. Now that most of the paperwork has been filed, I guess the judge kind of wants to hear where we think, you know, the case is going from, from here on. So that will happen on August. So nothing for the council to do on that, but I'll report back hopefully by the time you have your work session in August, if there's anything to know. There were filings by the PPRP and the Public Service Commission by the July twelfth deadline. Of course, we, we did our filing a little bit early and you all should have copies of that. So that was Ned Cuman's testimony and the opposition document. The other testimony and information came in while I was on vacation, so I'm a little bit late getting it to you. Today's my first day back, but I've read through it all and I've gotten it to Dawn now. She didn't have it earlier today. Okay, so maybe it has been sent. I'm sure you haven't had a chance to look at it. But, but I thought I'd take this opportunity to sort of explain to you what you're looking at. The, the PPRP is the, sort of the clearinghouse agency for the state. They go to various state agencies, they get input. They study the project from a technical standpoint, from planning, zoning, all the different angles. And then they do an assessment and that assessment is part of what you, what you have now. They call it a draft assessment, but it's, I think, pretty close to, to final. There's also a secretarial letter, which kind of sums up the position of seven or eight state agencies. And the secretaries of each agency you'll see sign it. So it's, it's been, it's been sort of vetted through each process. And, and you'll see, you'll see that. And the secretarial letter is only a couple of pages. So if you're looking for a quick view of where the state's coming from, you'll see, you'll see that. And what you'll see is that the agencies feel like from a technical standpoint that, that they're supportive of the project and they think it could be made to work. They do not believe that the landscape screening is adequate that's been proposed on the plan. So they want more screening and they go into great detail as to what they want screened and where they want it screened. It has to do with historical properties. It has to do with glare. It has to do with the entrance to town. So that's all good stuff and they recognize the town as an interested party in that. So at one point, they even make, make the point that the town will need to approve, you know, that landscaping to the extent it will protect town residents and property. The, the assessment itself is a really voluminous document. It has a lot of technical, electrical distribution type discussion that as a town, we can't take a position on because we don't have independent expertise on that. So we have to rely on the state and so I didn't spend a lot of time focusing on that. One disappointing part of the assessment itself, the big, thick document, was that it didn't really discuss our position that this project is inconsistent with the, with the town's comprehensive plan. Which is, which is to me, an ironclad position. However, in the secretarial letter, and I'll read this little excerpt, but I know you'll, you'll want to go back and look at it in greater detail. But they very much acknowledge Ned's position on the master plan. And there's a lot of language in here encouraging citizens to come back to the town and talk about, you know, how they can satisfy, you know, the town's position on this. In the secretarial letter, which again is signed by seven different agency, secretaries of seven different agencies. One of which is Secretary McCord of the Department of Planning. And it says, "Finally, we encourage citizens, U.B. Solar, to continue discussions with the town of Union Bridge regarding the annexation of project lands into the town as contemplated by the comprehensive plan." So it's kind of interesting. They put it in the latter, which is a kind of the most important statement to me. But it's not really fleshed out that well in, in the Kelly testimony. And that's the other thing. Fred Kelly is, is sort of the engineer expert that presents testimony on behalf of PPRP. So you'll see his testimony. If you really dig into it, his testimony pretty much tracks along with the assessment. So they're two big, thick documents, but they, there's a lot of repetition between the two. But Kelly is basically backing up what, what the assessment will tell you. Kelly will discuss and acknowledge Ned's position on the comprehensive plan, but that's about as far as he goes. He acknowledges the town's position, but he doesn't actually agree with it. But in the secretarial letter, that's a pretty strong statement. So that, that part was encouraging. The other highlights, if there's anything else I haven't mentioned. And there is in a couple of different places you'll see where the agencies just generally say that the town will need to approve permits and do site plan review because part of this project's in the town anyway. So they, they've recognized that. So that gives the town a little bit of leverage even, you know, no matter how this turns out. And the last thing I'll mention is that we sent, I talked to a representative from Maryland Municipal League. And they, as you all may know, they played a part, I think with Mako in, in affecting the legislation that we're now dealing with that requires the judge to give, quote, "due consideration" to the master plan and the zoning, which is, you know, our strongest point, that this is inconsistent with the master plan. So MML has an interest in this. I think it was Ellen that sent around a newspaper article about a recent court decision. You know, that to say, we looked at that issue at the beginning and felt like it's not going to be worth appealing that because it, and, and the decision was seven to nothing. That this idea of preemption that we talked about at the beginning, the state law does preempt our local zoning. Except for this language that was negotiated in by Mako and MML that requires the Public Service Commission to give due consideration to the plan. Doesn't say how much weight, but you know, our position is that's pretty important, especially when this is diametrically opposed to our plan. So just to follow up, we, we sent our position information, Ned's testimony to MML. It's been over a week now and I haven't heard back from them, but they know the issue. And they're interested in the issue because this may be the first time that a solar developer has tried to fit the project right into the, into the town, you know, right into the municipal planning area. And, and you know, we think they should be interested. We've talked to them because, you know, could this happen anywhere else? It's not just Union Bridge. And do we want the developers, when they're seeking out land, to seek out land that's right on top of main streets all over the state? Or do we want the message to be that, you know, that's protected land? You ought to be real careful when you get too close, you know, to the residential core of the Main Street community. So hopefully we'll get some support from MML, MML on that and, you know, we'll stay tuned. So that's in a nutshell, kind of where we are right now. And you all may have questions. I, I'm thinking that even though I don't ordinarily attend the work sessions because of the timing, that might be a good idea on April twelfth, which will be a week before the public hearing and after the time that we've had the status conference with, with the judge. But we can cross that bridge when we come to it.
You mean August?
August.
August twelfth.
What did I say?
April.
Oh, April. Yeah, I meant August. That's, it begins with an A.
Curiosity question about the, the judge's, what do they call that? The judge's letter. Where he asked if we wanted to sit with him at the public meeting.
Right. Yeah, I, I think, well.
I was just curious as to, to, you know, what that involved. Just sitting there beside him?
Yeah. Yeah, and sort of presiding, just like you all sit up here rather than sitting down in the audience. So I don't see that as a requiring a lot more effort. I mean, we know the case, you know, we're prepared.
No, no, I just was curious as to, you know, I'd never been to any of these kind of things before where the, a public hearing where you had the judge there and the law judge rather, and I just wasn't sure what that meant. If I sat up there with, with the judge and, or any of us did, you know.
I think that they want to give the town the opportunity to be part of the decision body. And it'll, and remember, in a lot of cases, the town is going to, or the county might be supportive of what's happening. And so it makes a lot more sense that they would be up there answering questions and being sort of in unison with, you know, with the state people. In this one, it might be a little different. So we'll have to talk about how we want to do that.
At the work session.
Yeah.
I think we have some letters of support coming, but I, you know, I haven't seen them yet.
It's not a moment too soon at this point.
Yeah, because the work session is on the twelfth and this doesn't have to be sent to him until the fourteenth.
From what conversations I had last week or so, I think there's going to be some letters of support. And I think like one of the sessions in, in Ocean City, the other Tuesday was the afternoon with the cabinet secretaries. And I talked to State Department of Planning people about this issue and, and some conversation followed up after that. So hopefully everything.
Do you, when was that? Do you think that affected what, what we're seeing here in the?
I think so because that was on June the twenty-fifth, when they had this session with the cabinet secretaries. And I had conversation with some county folks the past week or so about letters.
Okay, well, June, this was really heating up in June. We were having a lot of discussions with various people at the state, the county. So yeah, that would have been, that, that may have really helped. I didn't know that, I didn't know that. I know you were intending to do that, but I don't think I ever got the word.
Yeah, that, yeah, you, I didn't get a chance to tell you, but that cabinet session with the round secretary's is really helpful down there. Because this year we had twenty-eight cabinet secretaries in the room and you could go from whoever you wanted to, from one to one, one-on-one conversation. And I talked to Wendy Peters that day and another gentleman from the Department, State Department of Planning. And when I got phone calls from the county, they said that they had talked to Wendy and it was, it was helpful.
That's all I have.
Okay, Deputy Clusey. He will not bore you. I say he will not bore you.
And he'll read the regular report as opposed to what I did last month.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Quarterly report this time.
Thank you.
Between the dates of June seventeenth, two thousand nineteen until July twenty-first, the Carroll County Sheriff's Office responded to sixty-nine calls for service at the town limits of Union Bridge. Out of those calls for service, only three required a report, which were the following. On June nineteenth, at approximately three forty-six PM, deputies responded to the one hundred block of East Elgar Street in reference to a domestic assault. Investigation revealed that Parent and Chant got into a mutual physical altercation over the juvenile, over what the juvenile was wearing. Neither party wanted to pursue charges. Case was closed by lack of prosecution. On July ninth, at approximately four PM, deputies responded to the one hundred block of North Main Street in reference to a late reported domestic assault. Investigation revealed that the assault occurred out of town limits on July seventh, between husband and wife. Case remains open pending further investigation. On July seventeenth, at approximately twelve forty-five AM, deputies responded to the one hundred block of East Broadway Street in reference to an assault. Investigation revealed that several known parties were assaulted over an argument. Case remains open pending further investigation. In front of you, you have the quarterly report. So far this year, we are at three hundred and thirty-six calls for service within the town limits. Out of those three hundred and thirty-six calls for service, thirty-six of them required reports. So where does that leave us for quarterly areas? We are up thirty from last quarter from this year. We're up from eleven from. We're up from 11 from 2018 this quarter, and in 2017, we're up by 23. By events or reportable offenses, we are up by 10 from last quarter. This year, 13 from 2018 and 1 from 17. There's graphs at the end. Unfortunately, Wired is listening to you guys. The reportable events graph is all screwed up. Yeah, so, Don, I'll get you a new one. Other than that, we do have one upcoming event coming up, and this is New Windsor National Night Out, August 6th, from 6:30 to 8:30 PM, at the New Windsor Carnival Grounds. At this time, I have over 40 vendors with several demonstrations, lots of kid activities this year, and food, and the food is only last by last. And hope to see everybody there. Other than that, that's all I got.
I think it's important, you know, you say, like, 336 calls. People understand that you have, how many have actually took reports, you know?
36.
Yeah, you know, 300 and some calls, only 36 were reports done. Just goes to show you that people call the police, and they call for ambulances when they get hardly anything, you know? Ambulances used to go out when they had people really needed ambulance, and now people call the ambulance when they have upset stomach, they have a headache. So that gives you a lot more calls than you used to have. In my day, for my parents to call the police because I didn't wear what they wanted me to wear, I'd have wore something else, you know? It's just the nature of people today that they don't, they don't run their households the way they should, and they want the police, and they want everybody else to do it for them. So I think it's important that people, when they look at these charts and they say 336 calls in a quarter, but only 36 of them took reports, so I just want to make that, you know?
So, well, the 336 is for years to date.
Yeah.
Out of those, 83 of them were traffic stops.
Yeah.
So 43 of them were building checks, you know? So again, every time we enter something into our cash system, it's generating talk with us. Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And while we have you there, I have, I have a request, and you've probably seen it, the trash that's on the bank parking lot that I think the gentleman is putting there. I was going to clean it up, but if I clean it up, it may not be real, you know, I may get a little bit aggravated with the person, so...
Yeah, so I actually was on the phone with the state's attorney's office trying to figure out what we're going to do with this gentleman, so, yes.
Okay.
So things are in the process.
Are you going to stick around after the meeting? I want to talk to you anyway. Bye.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're down to public comments and concerns. I know we had Rec Council here tonight. Is she still here?
I'm here, I'm here.
Oh.
I don't think I'm here.
Okay. I'm going, I'm just going to skip by a little bit and let Laura introduce one of our other guests back here, because we have, I don't know whether he's going to get up and say anything or not, but...
Probably not. So my son Sawyer is in the back row. He is a Boy Scout, and he is here because he is going to be working on his citizenship and the community merit badge. So he needs to attend a local town meeting, so lucky for him, he gets to come and spend the night, spend the evening with his mom. But that's my youngest, youngest of six, he's 12. So, are you having fun, Sawyer?
Well, and while, you know, while we're talking about Laura's family, her son also, through the Carroll County Chapter of Maryland Municipal League, we give out scholarships every year at her, I guess...
Son number three.
Son number three did win a scholarship through the Maryland Municipal League, the Carroll County Chapter this year, so...
And the judging committee didn't even realize it was her son.
Well, that's, that's the way they're supposed to do it.
When we went to the meeting and I told him that, he's like, "You're kidding."
Yes.
So it's definitely a fair contest.
So, their scholarships are out there. We need more people to go out there and try to get them every year, because I know there's some, some children go out there and get as many as 15, 20 scholarships during the year. I know...
Heather Shockley.
Heather Shockley, which everybody knows is, Vicki Shockley, Vicki Greenwood, Uspel Town Council, her daughter, I don't know how many she didn't get this year, a lot of them.
A lot.
And they all count up when you start, Amy will find out, and she's got two that's going, and Laura's had, got six that's going, could be doing this, so it helps. And I'm sure Shaun's going to have the same problem here after a while with his family, so there's plenty of scholarships out there. Okay, anyone else? Public comments or concerns before we go on down through the meeting?
Believe it or not, I get the Carroll County Times.
Okay, we'll have to get you to state your name and address, please.
Oh, Charles Pickett. I'm at 142 West Broadway Street, the end of the line. I get the Carroll County Times, and I've read a very interesting article in the Carroll County Times this past week about New Windsor and their wonderful building projects. I just want to make the comment that I certainly hope, in my lifetime, I can see the same for Union Bridge. That would be nice. Now, you're talking about the state government. We have Larry Hogan in there now. He ought to be very sensitive to the people up here in this area, because generally speaking, it's a good Republican area. I remember what Willie Don Schaefer did when he wanted Route 97 in from Baltimore to Annapolis. Record time for putting a piece of roadwork in. They skipped everything, impact studies and everything else they put the road in. So I would like to see that, since I moved to Union Bridge, which has only been two years, they closed the bank, they closed the hardware store. I can't be responsible for either of those. They closed the liquor store. I could be responsible for that, but I don't buy that much. But I'd love to see Union Bridge grow, and that was one of the things that you ran on, and I sure hope that I see it in my lifetime.
I'm hoping I see it in my lifetime, too. I was just re-elected. I want to say, I want to see it happen in the next, get started in the next four years anyway, but like these ladies were saying here earlier, we're very careful because growth has to pay for growth.
One of the things I can tell you from being in business for many, many years, the more layers of management you have, the more across you, and sometimes the slower it gets.
Yes, it does. Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay, we'll start with our committee meetings, committee reports then. Ellen?
Sunday morning, I was there bright and early and worked at the registration desk, checking people in, helping those first timers that hadn't been there before, giving them little tips and things like that. Sunday was also the, the chapter officers' meeting that they have for us every year, where they give us information to bring back to our municipal chapter. I attended that, and as a representative of the Engagement and Outreach Committee, I attended the municipal first-time attendees' meeting, which they have on Sunday before the conference starts, to let them know that there's people there to help them out, the new, the new attendees, if they things, and what they can get from MML. I did not bring my paper with me, I'm sorry, so I don't have what I did Monday. Tuesday was the business meeting, which I always attend, and once again, Union Bridge got their banner city, banner town, year tag, which, Don was on vacation, so I didn't let it lay around, I just put it on there for you, so you, it didn't get lost, because it's such a big little thing there. I also attended the SNAP Municipal Grant Making Workshop, which really wasn't what I thought it was going to be, because I thought it was more about us getting grants, but it's more about putting together grants for your, for things to happen in the town, whether it be for the residents or the businesses, whatever. Our example would be the facade, to make a better facade for your building. And I'm sitting there, and I'm thinking, wow, this was such a waste. And then the gentleman beside me started talking and gave me some information, which I've yet to pass on, about where to get grants that don't cost you anything to make the grants that you want to make for your town. So they say we wanted to make a grant to improve the look of the Main Street houses or businesses, whatever, we could actually get grants from this place to have the money to give the grants to the people that wanted to apply for it. I also attended the, on Tuesday, the receive surplus property from the state, which was very interesting, and I've got a lot of information from that. And I helped to lead the new officials meet and greet, where the Engagement and Outreach Committee members, of which I was last year, have a room reserved where any new time, first-time attendee or even older attendees who want to come in and communicate with them, can come in and we can discuss whatever's, whatever they want to talk about, whether it's how they do what they do at the meetings, or at their meetings, or where they get information on things, any questions, concerns they have. And then on Wednesday, I was also there for the Wings Meeting, which is Women in Government Service, which is actually going through a restructuring and figuring out what exactly they want to do. So that was pretty much it, except for whatever I did Monday, which I don't have written down.
Okay, all right.
Saw your other report.
All my other report. No problems with trash, or I think everything else is taken care of.
Laura?
Okay, so I attended on Sunday the successful municipal-county collaboration. There, we just talked about working together with county and state and not really, I guess, said, stay in your lane, don't take other people's businesses. The one thing that I liked that Salisbury talked about is they created a program called SWIFT, which is the Salisbury-Wakamiko Integrated First Care Team, and it was designed to reduce the non-emergency overuse of 911. And they received a grant in the amount of $75,000 from Care First, and then they received in-kind donations from the Peninsula Regional Medical Center for $60,000 a year. And what they would do is they had a paramedic and a registered nurse go to different homes of people who had called 911 five or more times in a six-month period for non-emergency calls. So they would go, and they would check blood pressure, they would go and help dispense medicines. Sometimes they would get calls for people who needed to get in or out of their wheelchairs or get into their beds, so these, that's what they do. And they said they now have, like, 80 regular patients that they visit all the time, and that was just an interesting way to go about relieving 911 of excessive phone calls. On Monday, I took the opioid overdose response training. We talked a little bit about the need for response training and how to administer Narcan, and we were each given a Narcan kit. We were also, one quote that I liked is, "If we walk away, we only contribute to the problem." I attended the opening general session with Dr. Bertice Berry, who was hilarious, and she had a lot of one lines that, she was good. Like, one of them said, "If you ain't dead, then you ain't done. We don't make mistakes when we are new at something, we make mistakes when we are comfortable with something." She said, "You can be dumb all by yourself, no need to join with stupid." So she was hilarious. "Soak in the praise, because we need, we need to reserve it for the bad days. Stop taking on the problems of everyone else. Fix your backflow valve." One thing she said I liked, she said, "Ask for a story and get that story. We are connected to each other through narratives." I attended the active shooter situational awareness. I had taken that class a few years ago, and I kind of liked the one from a few years ago better than the one from this year. Last time, they gave ideas of how to react if you're in an active shooter case, and this one was just more, they didn't really give you ideas. They did say, if you are around an active shooter, that you should run as far away as possible, do not stay in sight, keep running, and do not stop. I know sometimes the kids at schools have been advised to go run and hide someplace, but they're saying, just keep running. It says, "If you cannot run, hide in a secure room, not under a desk. Conceal yourself in a dark room, cover windows, turn off lights, and lock and block the door. Silence your phone and turn off your vibrations," because they said your vibrations can still be heard, "and call 911. The third option is to fight." I attended the Community Emergency Response Team, which is CERT. That is just a group of well-organized and well-trained volunteers who help, able to assist in emergencies until professionals arrive. And it said, "It's not a matter of if it's going to happen, but when it's going to happen, so be prepared." I attended the general session with Charles Marrone, I guess is how he says his last name, is why are so many cities and towns across North America going broke? He has a website called StrongTowns.org. He said, "Be with people, observe them, and be co-creators of space." I also attended the receive surplus property from the state and have a bunch of resources for Dawn. They said that FEMA overbuys, and instead of storing their items in warehouses, they want to donate it. They donate things, things that are donated are meal kits, computers, furniture, copy paper, medical supplies, office supplies, water, food, MREs, Band-Aids, tablets, generators. I attended the Tiny Towns Forum, and I guess the last one I attended was the Preparedness for Town Events. And they said, if someone's going to plan some, any kind of event in town, to make sure you find out if it's a personal event or a public event, if it's going to be something, they said some people had reserved, like, a pavilion to, you know, one day, and they realized that it was going to be a community event, and they did not have the proper resources. And so they had to step in and handle that themselves. They had mentioned that, was that the class? Maybe it wasn't the class. One of the classes, I guess it wasn't that one, oh, yes, it is. They were having an earth, wind, and fire tribute band, but somebody had falsely advertised that it was earth, wind, and fire coming. And so they said on social media, it had posted and shared so many times, that 30,000 people said they were coming to this event. And they said, the most they ever had at these events was 200 people. So they had to put the word out quickly through social media that it was not earth, wind, and fire, but a tribute band. And then they said, they still had, like, 5,000 show up to hear this tribute band, but they said, of course, it was 105 degrees that day, and they had to have extra watering water station and extra cooling fans, and the traffic was a disaster. So they said, you know, if you have an event and it gets shared on social media, track that so you can prevent things like that. They also said that one of the cities had, was selected to do an ice cream tour, and it was advertised on the radio that had 600,000 listeners, and people started RSVPing that they were going to attend this ice cream tour. And the town, the city finally called the radio station and said, you know, "How many ice creams are you planning to have?" And they said, you know, I forget what it was, like, 300. They said, "We had, like, 12,000 people wanting to come to this. It's the last day of school, you better have more ice cream than, you know, than that." So I thought those were interesting stories that should just, you know, monitor social media and make sure that if people are planning events, you know how many people are going to be there, so you know what resources you need, so...
Okay. Edgar?
Okay. On Monday, I took the one class, Village Movement and Aging Place, which that's a, it's like a committee, a group of people that you have in your town that goes around and helps the senior citizens do tours, maybe take them to the doctors and stuff like that. Then I attended the active shooter citation awareness, and then I tasted the Community Emergency Response Team, which might be involved anyway, bringing along to the Fire Company on this one. Then Tuesday morning, I went through, done all the exhibits, and talked to some of the people that has playground equipment that we'll be looking into probably. And then Tuesday afternoon, I went to the DS Supply Property, which I think just about all of us attended that class. And then I went to the Tiny Towns, which it's a real smart... And then I went to the Tiny Towns, which it's a, they're real small towns, and they talked what, how they operate and trying to get grants and stuff to do their things. And then Wednesday, I took the Planning and Procall, preparing us for the town events, and Laura was there with me, so that's about all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Edgar. Dawn?
Well, I guess I did pretty much what Laura already said.
Thank you. I remember my classes.
But I did go to, I did, I was disappointed a bit in the active shooter class. I did go to one different on recycling, the future of recycling. And around two thousand, it was really an upswing around two thousand. By two thousand and ten, it leveled off. And actually, now, some of the recycle centers have closed. So, I'm a big recycle person in our, in our household. So, we actually, we need to, to the behavior, we need some changes and some education on, on recycling. And the next two or three years, it's going to be, recycling's going to be a little tough. Just like our trash, our plastic bags, you're at a grocery store now, you can't put them in recycling. The incinerators seems like that's not a, a no-no in some areas, where you can't burn anything. So, anyway, something we got to, got to keep our eye on this recycling. I'm also interested in the, I will mention the surplus equipment. That seemed like a pretty good thing. Maybe we, we need some equipment here in town since we have a limited budget. So, Tiny Towns, I heard some of the discrepancies and issues that Tiny Towns have. But one of the more interesting, excuse me, since I'm on streets, one of the vendors is concrete, and I'm very interested in cement. And they have got a program out there starting, actually, it's based in Fragrant, one of them, it's called overlay or white topping. And it's, if you put concrete down, it may be a little bit more expensive, but it's, it can last twenty to thirty years, far over what some of your, your blacktop. And since we have an ongoing issue out here with North Main Street, and since O'Malley raped all these towns and took our highways, our funds away, and Hogan, Governor Hogan has helped us in bringing some of our, our funds back, it's still an ongoing problem. So, it's really an area out there I'm really going to be looking into, possibly saving some money in the long run. That pretty well takes care of my meetings. Also, back to our regular job, we have a post up here at the parking meters that Amy called as we have a post that is, protects the meter. An individual backed into it, broke the thing completely off, and just fixed the thing and they broke it off. So, we got to fix that again. And we're starting to pave streets here today. We did some milling over on Lightner Street and also on East Broadway. And I want to thank Lehigh for donating stone out here behind the town hall here on West Broadway Extended. We put some stone down, and next year, we will be paving that.
With Thomas.
With, we'll hope, I'm great hopes, so I want to see. And so, that's, and, and I'm really, I'm really excited about Jerry Stanball here, down here in the old grocery store, where new brewery's going to be. He's got a lot of exciting ideas inside. It really looks nice. He's not near finished, but it's just like Perry and I, we, we tend to tear a little, the sweet corn festival there. That's unfortunate, it was so hot. But I'm really excited for Union Bridge, here, when some of these things are hot. So, that's it.
Amy?
I had two calls for water and sewer, a leak on Benedham Street, which was on the customer side, and a bill question, which I forwarded to our town clerk, Dawn. Our Substance Abuse Expo is on Thursday, October twenty-fourth, from four to eight at the Fire Hall. I attended our planning and zoning meeting on July eighteenth. We have a new town, the town has a new county planner, Ms. Nair. She updated the commission on the county's bicycle, pedestrian, master plan, the triennial update to the Carroll County Water and Sewer Master Plan, and the master plan amendment and the comprehensive rezoning. The 2018 annual report has been accepted by the county's planning commission and has been submitted to the state. I also attended, attended the Maryland Municipal League Summer Conference, which was titled Together We Can. I benefit so much from all the expertise offered at this conference. It's absolutely amazing. I also attended two general sessions, an opioid overdose response training, active shooter situational awareness meeting, community emergency response teams, the How Towns, Nonprofits, and in Need Populations Can Receive Surplus Property From the State, Tiny Town Discussions, and an ICMA RC Security Guarantee for Investment, which taught you how fraud can happen and how to avoid it. It was a really amazing class. Also, on Tuesday, June twenty-fifth, there was a vote for the MML's 2019-20 Board of Directors, and our mayor, Perry Jones, was voted president-elect for the ensuing year. So, congratulations.
Thank you.
We are also recognized as a banner town, as Ellen said, and our town reaches this status by a lot of hard work and participation from these council members here. So, thank you very much for doing that. My, my favorite thing at the whole entire conference is on Tuesday afternoon, my kids are allowed to enter the exhibit halls. This allows them to see how local government works. It sparks conversations about goals and methods to help bring things into our local town here. And my kids, at the age they are at, they are watching these goals. They're, they're, they know they're ambitious, but they're achievable. So, that's exciting for me to see them because I want them sitting here when they can be. I would just like to thank the town and the people in it for the opportunity to attend and learn. Thank you.
Okay. One thing, do you know the date of the parade for Francis Scott Key?
September eighteenth.
Eighteenth, okay. So, September eighteenth, there will be a parade in Union Bridge, it'll come down Main Street, start about the same way the Fireman's Parade. It's, every year, the people at Francis Scott Key, they do this parade. It goes from town to town. This year is Union Bridge's turn, so that will, but it starts early. That's a five-thirty in the evening parade. So, it, it takes a place, and then they leave here to go out to school, and they do a, I think they still do a Powderpuff Football Team game after that. So, hopefully, there will be plenty of people out here, and then also go to Key after that to watch this football game. So, that's the beginning of the year, so, well, I think they've already applied for their permits and things like that, so, and I gave them permission to do that, so they will be doing that. And then also, just talked to Gene Kirkman, I gave him approval. Francis Scott Key is doing a fundraiser, and they're going to do a car wash, and we're going to let them do the car wash at the Fire Hall, so we'll just have to keep a track on the water. But they are going to do a fundraiser with the high school students, and it goes to, they have two different dates, and I don't know what they are right now. I'd have to get it for you. Gene gave, talked to me a couple of days ago about it, when he talked to the school, they wanted to know if they could do it. I'll have to get the dates. I've got so many dates, and I didn't put the date of the car wash down, so I'll get that to you. Our next work session, like we were saying earlier, is August the twelfth at six-thirty, and our next council meeting is August the twenty-sixth. Is there anything else before we adjourn? If not, here a motion for adjournment?
I make a motion that we adjourn this meeting.
I second it.
A motion and second. Any questions? All those in favor, rise?
Aye.
No, this motion's carried. Thank you very much for attending.